Okay, the time is now 5:00 p.m. and I call this administrative meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. If you haven't done so already, please make sure that you have silenced your cellphones and please sign in in the back if you haven't done so already. First order of business this evening is some recognition for employees in parks and recreation. So I will call Ozzie up.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the state of Alabama's best parks and recreation agency, which is Ozark Parks and Rec Agency. Congratulations to all the employees that are here. I have the Lake represented, Cinder Center, where's Miss Victoria? Right there, Arch Center, the Grunts Crew, everybody's here. So thank you very much for all the work that you put in every day. Without your efforts, without everything you do for us, we wouldn't be here receiving this award. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. It's an honor and a pleasure to work with every single one of you. So thank you. We have some awards made, the way we can remember this moment forever. I don't want to take too much time here. I'll give you the awards for you guys later. But if I could have all the employees here with me so we can take a picture, that would be wonderful, please.
Yes, yeah. Oh my gosh. Yeah, come on back.
You're gonna have to do like two lines, three lines.
Yeah, tall on the front, a little bit short on the back, and everybody's got to scoot together.
Very good. Congratulations to everybody. Good job.
If y'all have not had the opportunity to go out to East Gate, y'all all know they did a great job in the gym, but the locker rooms and what they've done in the locker room, framing walls up and painting and getting that the way it needs to be where we have multiple teams out there playing, they got a place to play. And they've done all that in-house themselves. It was great.
Thank you, guys.
No good.
Now, at this time, we will review the agenda for the 5:30 p.m. meeting. So after a call to order and prayer and pledge allegiance, the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on February 4th will be reviewed. Council members, have you had a chance for me to do those minutes?
Yes, we did.
Any comments or questions?
We do.
Item number five is a first and second reading application for special retail more than 30 days. It's a license transfer for the applicant Wiregrass Enterprises LLC to Happy Times. So Director Ward, if you would like to speak on that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a name change application for Hetan that saw changing the name to Wiregrass Enterprises LLC, and it is my recommendation for approval for the first and second reading.
Okay. Council members, do you have any additional questions? Board?
Not for the team. I got some, I want some clarification on something, maybe the city clerk.
Sure.
But I remember on the previous license, I was told that it was Jason Harlow, the owner of the rest.
There was?
Jason Harlow was the owner on the previous license.
Only one that is going to be involved with the city business. Yes.
Right. Only Jason Harlow is the owner.
That's correct.
And now it's, this is a different match.
Different.
This has nothing to do with the city.
Oh, no. This is the business downtown next to Moose Creek.
So it wouldn't affect the name that we done one month ago?
That would be part of the investigation of the police department and, of course, they have them. This is just a name change. Is that right?
It's one company. Harlow Incorporated owned it, a husband's company, and now we're transferring it to my company, which is Wiregrass Enterprises. He is sole 100% owner of Harlow Incorporated. I am 100% owner of Wiregrass Enterprises. The two do not mix.
That was the clarification I wanted. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you. Item number six is a resolution declaring surplus property in EMS. Director Ward?
This is the items, the last items y'all purchased for us that went into service by some these summer. This items here is at the end of use, and so we won't surplus it so we can go ahead and get it out of the inventory.
Thank you. Council members, does anyone have any comments or questions for Director Ward on that?
No.
I'd be glad to see you to go.
Thank you.
Item number seven is amendments for setting mayor and council member salaries. Mayor, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, we've talked about this a couple of times in the past, and we put some numbers together several months ago. And I've been talking with other mayors and councils in this part of the state, and what we're actually talking, you follow the day, they already increased theirs. Troy and Andalusia was planning to do theirs. I didn't get confirmation on that. But basically, we're asking to change it due to Heather's math with the 26 pay period. It comes up to $815 per month on the city council pay, and there's no change in the mayor's pay. The other thing that it does is it fills the cost of living raise into all elected officials so they don't have to address this again in the future. And that's something that seems to be the trend in other areas that we've talked to. And just to give you an example, we're still behind Troy and Andalusia, which are two cities fairly comparable in size. We're still, council will be much less with us now.
Council members, do you have any comments or questions about the numbers presented and everything that was put in the ordinance?
I haven't seen the numbers. I think the mayor has some numbers there on like-sized cities.
We were given a number.
Right. That was wild, that. I understand that.
But they're the same, except the ones that made adjustments.
Right. Yeah, I thought we had some more curriculums in our package.
So they are the same or the same as our own packet or higher?
They couldn't have changed theirs from last administration to now.
This is not effective until the next administration. So it would not take place until November 2025, which will also be next fiscal year and all of that, all of that stuff. This is for everyone in attendance. You can't decide, we can't vote in to change our own salary right now. It's for the next time, for the next council.
Yeah, and with that in mind, you know, I meditated over it well. And I know it has no bearing on this, but municipalities in the state of Alabama don't have homes, can't do anything on in and of ourselves. The legislature set that up. However, the legislature can vote themselves a raise in, and they can get ready again. But I would like to see it, and I may propose this to the league, that municipalities be able to address raises at any time during their term. Now, there are a lot of things in this city that I would like to see done that have not been done. I've been an advocate of it for quite some time now, and I could list them all, you know. When we're looking at a sports complex, we're looking at quite a few things, high-dollar items. So at this time, I will say that I'm not in favor of any increases. I didn't come here to the council to make it, you know. It's not, it's not make money, it's not, it's basically service, public service. So, you know, I'm not in favor of any increase in and of myself, but for the employees, I am in favor of raises for my city employees in all departments. Thank you.
Yes. Any other comments or questions?
I think the one thing that causes this to keep coming up is if you're making $600 a month and you're sitting here paying out $600 or $800 a month in donations, it just makes it, you know, a little unfair. I mean, that's the kind of the driving force, it's the reason this keeps coming up.
And any other comments or questions? I guess my only, for me, whenever we keep getting presented with the numbers from other cities that are much higher than ours, and they, and those cities are not as employed as I think as the mayor keeps us, it is, it is time, even though it is, we are definitely not doing this for the funds. But we have been advocates for our city, and we have, we have, just in our term, we've done increases for our employees, in the last term and this term, we've done increases for our employees. And then the council amount has not changed since 2008, '07 or '08.
It was actually 2004 administration.
2004 administration, and it is now 2025. I think that does put it in the face of imagining you had done a job for 20-something years without a pay increase. But we're, but we are the ones who are advocating for our employees, and we do, and we do every day. So I think the meager, meager number of an increase that has been proposed is why I feel okay with it. We're not, it's definitely what I view as a stipend for it. It's not a full wage on biting needs. So that is what I would say about that.
Can I make one more comment? And this is just with a pub jump public note. I served as county commission chairman for eight years. Y'all work the same amount of time basically as a county commissioner. County commission in Dale County makes $26,554 a year plus $3,900 in your gas allowance. What we're asking y'all to increase to is $9,600, $9,601. So I don't think that's too much to ask.
And when you put it in the perspective of that, the five of us together wouldn't be making as much as two of the commissioners.
Right.
I don't, all right. So with that, and also just for you guys, since it is an ordinance, someone will have to make a motion to suspend the rules for that one. Item number eight is an executive session for the declaration of purchase or sale of property and also pending litigation. And then, so Attorney Adams, I'll ask, sale or purchase of property pending litigation?
Both of these subjects are proper for executive sessions.
All right. So with that, I will go out into the audience. Are there any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions about any of the agenda items this evening? Are there any comments or questions from anyone in attendance on any of our agenda items this evening? Is there anyone in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular this evening?
Good evening. I had a last-minute, I sent an ask-the-last-minute email today that you all may or may not have seen, but back in November, we applied for an Innovate Alabama grant, which is a state agency, and we applied for funding to do some improvements to the Ozark Technology Center. Do you recall, it was built in 1996, and we call it the Ozark Technology Center, but its technology is still 1996. So these are much-needed, it's much-needed equipment. We found out Friday that we had, we were awarded the grant, but they had to revise it, so I got the final grant funding agreement today. So what we've been awarded is $140,000 plus a $43,478 network designation grant. And so what we need to do is authorize the mayor to accept this money. There is no match, so there's no strings attached whatsoever. I'm happy to do the six-month reporting. Denise Ellis can be the department head that oversees all of this. And I do realize that the minutes won't be approved until the next meeting, but I also am concerned about pushing this another two weeks before we can get the ball rolling. So just asking that we might add that to the agenda and approve the acceptance of this grant expeditedly.
Okay. Which, which we find, so it's, we received an email from the city clerk. Okay, so we were saying we would have the mayor execute the agreement.
Yeah, I said myself, I didn't realize I can't be the one to, even though my name is on it, we'll get that switched around. I was just the one to apply on behalf of the city so they put my name on it, but we can get that fixed so that it's in his name.
So is there a way to say pending the, or just, well, if we say authorize the mayor, then he can't execute until a new agreement has come out, right? Am I thinking correctly, Chris?
Well, if you approve the agreement, the mayor executing it, and as long as that gets changed, then he can sign the agreement.
Okay. So with that, all right. So then at that, so then at that request, council members, do you have any objection to adding that tonight?
No.
The references of the email that was sent, there will need to be, and probably a lot of the judges, I would assume that that would have to suspend the rules because of the ordinance that's in place when you cannot expend general fund expenditures the same night that it's being presented?
Well, in this, in this case, this is a grant acceptance.
Correct. And there's no match.
But we will be, we will be spending the money and getting reimbursed, right?
I think we'll get the money on the front end, as far as I can tell.
But we don't have clarification of that?
No.
We can suspend the rules. I mean, that's, that's fine to do that, but if it was coming directly to us, I don't think we'd have to do the thing.
Right. We have the funds in hand, then it wouldn't be a problem.
Really to authorize the mayor to give effect to the, is it an ordinance or just an acceptance?
An acceptance.
It's not an ordinance, so, okay.
And I'm 99% sure when that account gets set up, they'll put the money directly in it. It's about, or if we would have to refund it if we didn't use it. I just have to report that it was spent the way that we were going to spend it.
I think I was of the assumption that we would have to expend it and then get the money back, reimbursed with the time.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, while we gotta do that, make that account, so they can get the money to us.
I believe that just a motion and second and a vote to authorize the mayor to.
The mayor to execute.
Okay, so an authorization for the mayor to execute for an agreement with the state of Alabama for the Innovate Alabama grant. Okay. Sorry, I was right on my eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular?
So I would like to make everybody aware of the fact that Ozark Parks and Rec would like to submit a bid to host a softball tournament this upcoming summer on June 19 through the 22nd at the East Gate Softball Complex. This, the bid for this tournament is $6,000, and total estimated cost to host a tournament is $12,000, that includes labor and supplies. This is significantly lower than the tournament we hosted last summer, but because of the terms and because of the age groups that will be participating will think that the city or will generate more revenue for the city in terms of hotel stays and retail shopping and guests and all those things. So I don't know if I did your blessing because I have the money in the budget, but I'd like to make you aware that we plan on hosting it.
Oh, okay. I was like, I was like, I would figure, okay. Yeah, just informational for us.
I appreciate that. I was like, wait, so is this not in your budget? Okay. We're, we're.
And you're talking 25 teams coming in here. That's gonna be a whole bunch.
Four more.
Wow.
He won't count, so I don't count.
Like, when you're going four more?
And I do have a question, though. Our softball fields are suitable for tournament?
Oh, yes, yes.
And then also, I thought you'd notice, but I made the trip out there, and there's a new RV park on the way out there, to East Gate on the left, and we might include that in the lodging information. Anybody who travels, their RV, they might want to stay there.
Yeah, we're gonna get the package started. As soon as we're ready, I'll make sure that Henry includes that.
We do have limited hotels, but we do, we seem to be getting more RV parks.
We do, and last time when we hosted the event, we partnered up with Dothen, but the offer they gave was wasn't very beneficial to us. So instead of having them as a co-hosting, we're gonna try to have Enterprise as the co-host, trying to keep most of the funds in Ozark, and then those funds go to other cities.
And also, since it is, East Gate is so close to Nova Cell Gate, you know, the Lake Lodge is there, and they have an RV park. Do they still have the RV park there, by the way?
Yeah, they took that one.
So I'm sure including all of that, too, is beneficial to us.
I appreciate the.
Thank you for the, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Is there anyone else in attendance that has any comments or questions on any subject in particular?
Okay, first of all, you might be saying the news, but I just want to make sure y'all are aware that last week, we opened up a mental health crisis center in Dothen, so the Headland Highway down there. This is one of the six crisis centers in the state of Alabama, which gives law enforcement a place to take people that have mental issues, and they actually have the capacity that they can keep them like six or eight days, depending on the situation. Where now, when you take them to the hospital, sometimes they can beat you to a parking lot. So it's a much improved system there, so a lot of people working down there, a lot of people excited. The governor was down here, and so hopefully that's gonna be a real benefit for us in this area. I know I was talking about the bail property and the property we have out there that bail had. We continue to meet with them. We have a meeting again tomorrow. We felt like we're getting really close on both of those projects, but we'll keep you updated on it. Also, last week, we have a freight aviation, that's one of the companies that's on our airport, and they're also on some other airports, and they're looking to do some expanding, and hopefully we'll be able to benefit from that expansion as well. Kent, been by the tennis courts. Our folks have done a great job digging up the tennis courts, all that's been in-house work. They painted the poles black, it looks really, really good, and I think as of this morning, we're about ready to turn it over to the company actually gonna be doing the work. The civic center upgrades that we're doing on the painting looks extremely good. There's a couple of things we're gonna do out there, you know, paint the flag poles and that kind of stuff, but that's really, really good. The baseball facility that y'all approved, just putting out for bidding, those bids will be in this Thursday, so hopefully we get started on that pretty soon. The tech center roof that y'all approved a couple of meetings ago, they kind of got behind with all the snow and issues, but we look for them to start most any day. The, just wanted to let y'all know, I'll be leaving tomorrow at lunch. I got a meeting with Lieutenant Governor Amesworth and Governor Ivey representing the gas board tomorrow with a couple of issues. There's about three hours called at that meeting. If you did not see, Klaus has been named to the Transportation Utility Infrastructure Chairman. That is, could be really beneficial to us in the future as we do projects. Wanted to let you know about an issue that just, we just received today. It is a formal notice of hazard, hazard traffic condition and liability concern. This is at Logan's Cleaners, and to make it just very simple, they have a problem with a drive-through window that they've had there, and we all recognize that that is a little bit dangerous. But anyway, this morning, I sent Ryan and State DOT team by order down there to talk to Richard, and we think we got a plan to work out to something Richard can live with. We're not saying that as it goes up the chain with State DOT, they're going to accept it, but Tim was on board with it, and hopefully we'll be able to work that out. Supposedly, it was sent to us a while back. Ryan and I got it the first go around, so I'm not sure what happened there. But also, I want to tell you that Holly and I are putting together a Droid Alabama project. We're actually working on two of those, but we're trying to ballpark the numbers on it on a project on the airport, and we're submitting that to Senovus Bank. The way that works, I told y'all last time, they're able to do income tax credits and help us fund the project rather than pay state income tax. The problem with a company like Senovus is we have to get in line because the Birmingham Hounds and the Huntsville's of the world will suck up all the money, and they probably got, I don't know, half a million dollars, I would guess, that would be available for this. So we're just trying to, at this point, get in line and try to get caught out of committed to us. So, and the last thing I have, just want to give you an example. One of our employees, not gonna call her by name, but her grandchildren are playing in three different sports this year, and this weekend, she went and purchased all the gear for those three events, was able to purchase every item at Dunn's to the $2,975, which meant that money stayed in Ozark rather than going somewhere else. So that's, that's a really good thing. I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Ed Figer?
I'm thinking I gotta, I just want to tell everybody about the high school play that's next week. It's Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
It's Tuesday, not, not next week, a weekend. It's the last week of February. Is it? Is that really? I'm like. Isn't it crazy? Isn't it? I know.
Those kids have really worked hard, hours, hours, and hours. Reason I know I got granddaughter in, in, they in school, they come home at 9:00, 9:30. Start the Bible, and they practice all day Saturday. I mean, it's comfortable in the city, in the city that you support.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Only one thing. The Third Region AUSA Fort Rutherford, Nova Cell Chapter here locally will be hosting the Third Region Meeting, April 3 through 6, which coincides with the Crawdad Festival weekend. So you'll have people here from 15 or more chapters from as far away as North Carolina, South Carolina, Alabama, Florida, Mississippi, Panama, and also Puerto Rico. And so we'll bring them over into Ozark on that Saturday, hopefully, and then portage up our Crawdad Festival. I didn't tell them what the play was. It's Funny Girl.
Thank you. Councilman Earl?
I just, I'll talk about Carroll's basketball season. We went up to the game last Thursday, the Sweet 16 game. They lost by under, under 10 points to Viger, which is a perennial basketball power down there, and.
Not, not next week, a weekend. It's the last week of February.
Next week.
Is it? Ooh, is that really? Isn't it crazy? Isn't it? I know.
Those kids have really worked hard, hours, hours, and hours, originally I know I got granddaddy in, and, uh, they're in school, they come home at nine, nine-thirty. Start the vibe, and, uh, they practice all day Saturday, I mean, it's, uh, comfortable in the, in the city, in the city that you support.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Only one thing, uh, the third region AUSA, uh, Fort Rutherford, Nova Cell chapter, here locally will be hosting, uh, the third region meeting, April three through six, which coincides with the Crawdade Festival weekend, so you'll have, uh, people here from fifteen or more chapters from as far away as North Carolina, South Carolina, Alabama, Florida, Mississippi, Panama, and also Puerto Rico, and so we'll bring them over into Ozark on that Saturday, hopefully, and then portake of our Crawdade Festival.
I didn't tell them what the play was. It's Funny Girl.
Thank you. Councilman Earl?
Uh, I just, I'll talk about Carroll's basketball season, we, uh, went up to the game last Thursday, uh, the Sweet Sixteen game, they, they lost by, uh, under, under ten points to Viger, which is a perennial basketball power down there, and, uh, Carroll led the entire game until the last five minutes, got behind a little bit, and then they did the old Dean Smith, North Carolina, four corners, and basically ran the clock down before Carroll could get in there, but, uh, that just was a tremendous season, uh, young team like I've been before, we're all losing one senior off of that team, so next season, we get Carroll baseball, gonna make some noise. Uh, now switching to baseball, I also wanna say, the Pettit man was there to play for that game up there, Gary Coliseum and McCamry, and Charles Anderson played like the game for us. There is more people from Ozark at Carroll's game than there was from Troy to see Charles Anderson play, and Viger from, you know, who is a rental office anybody. I was so proud of our folks from Ozark being there, Gary Coliseum, the cheer on the Carroll Eagles, so it was great to see. Um, so switching to Carroll baseball, Carroll right now is two and one on the season, uh, they won two, a doubleheader yesterday, and then their next home game is Monday night, six-thirty against Michael Lawrence at, uh, Eagle Stadium, y'all go out and check them out, it's a fun team to watch, so. And this girls soccer, they're just like on fire, especially the girls team, I mean, they, and they play, um, they play Charles Anderson Friday, uh, I think they're playing tonight, actually.
Right, playing in Rockland tonight.
Yeah, that, they, Friday, the, the girls play at five-thirty and the boys at seven, here at Matthew Stadium, for girls, uh, the girls and boys soccer, so. Uh, and Holton got the win, right?
She wins.
So he got two for both of them, see, that's, that's awesome, great, great.
The girls are number three, I think.
Yeah, number three in the state, yeah, and they're ahead for first, ahead in the polls for probably the first time ever over John Carroll, 'cause I know Kirk used to say, we'd run into people that'd say, oh, Carroll, is that John Carroll you're in that? It was Carroll Ozark. 'Cause John Carroll's like one of those big schools in the state for girls soccer, but we're, we're ahead of them right now, so it's a good time to read Eagles.
And this, this big stadium, the first play on that state on our new.
Yeah, yeah.
Said that, the new term.
The new term, yeah, yeah, it'll be the first official soccer game in the new.
Councilwoman Harlow?
So, yeah, so this Saturday is our fourth annual, um, Chili Cook-Off downtown Ozark between, uh, you can taste chili from four to six p, well, starting at four PM until chili runs out, uh, over there at Benchmark right here, morning, there'll be a cruise in that'll start at six o'clock, from six until nine, and then there's live music at Live at Harlow's. And, excuse me, something I shouldn't, and then, um, so anyway, it's looking for a good time, we've got four teams that are participating, so we're looking for a good afternoon, evening of good family fun, if you wanna come down and try some chili and vote for your favorite.
I have no comment except for with all of this, anyone who says that there's nothing to do in town, there's plenty to do in this town, there are a lot of good people that are trying to keep everything going and keep Ozark alive, and we appreciate them all. So with that, I will call this meeting to a close, and we'll begin the next meeting in three minutes. Okay, I called this meeting, yes, we have all both of our, our.
Ozark.
I called this meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order, we will begin this evening with a prayer led by Councilwoman Harlow and the pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Blankington.
Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for this opportunity, uh, to come before you this, this evening, I, I just pray that you be, be with each and every one of the public servants here tonight, and just, and just know that, uh, we serve the community out of the goodness of our hearts, dear Lord, um, and to better the community, and I just, I just pray that that's what the community sees in, in us, and, um, as we, as we move forward and going about the business of the city. I just pray that you be with those that are hurting tonight, dear Lord, and those that are sick, and those that are ill, uh, just pray that you, uh, put your hands on each one of them and, and just let the peace, um, the past is all understanding be with them. Be with us as we continue, um, the council meeting, and may it be according to your will, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance is implied by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will review the minutes from the regular council meeting that was held on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting held on February the fourth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on, uh, the minutes, on accepting these minutes as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is to set the agenda for this evening, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we, uh, uh, proceed with the first and second reading application, approve that for more than thirty days with the license transfer, uh, to Wiregrass Enterprise LLC from Happy Times, Lewis adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this as a first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, we have three, uh, three ayes and one abstention.
You gotta talk about me abstaining.
It's my business.
Certainly, it's not some type of, without abstaining, I think someone has a question about it.
Oh.
That's a reason to abstain.
That's a reason, yeah.
There's a reason to abstain.
All right, guys, it's okay, okay, all right, we, so, motion passes. Item number six is a resolution declaring surplus property in EMS, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we, uh, uh, proceed with the first and second reading application, approve that for more than thirty days with the license transfer, uh, to Wiregrass Enterprise LLC from Happy Times, Lewis adoption.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on accepting this as a first and second reading application? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay, we have three, uh, three ayes and one abstention.
You gotta talk about me abstaining.
It's my business.
Certainly, it's not some type of, without abstaining, I think someone has a question about it.
Oh.
That's a reason to abstain.
That's a reason, yeah.
There's a reason to abstain.
All right, guys, it's okay, okay, all right, we, so, motion passes. Item number six is a resolution declaring surplus property in EMS, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce a resolution that we declare surplus property in EMS.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Say.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on declaring this surplus property? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is an ordinance, so in order for, to consider that, we have to suspend the rules, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion that we suspend the rules, in consideration of, of the, uh, ordinance.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules in consideration of an ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, all right, motion passes.
All right, I gotta, I gotta read something, look, I'm just, it's information purposes, I, it's right here in the ordinance, section two, thirty-eight, laying over of measures generally for city council meetings. No ordinance or resolution of a permanent nature shall be adopted at a meeting at which it is introduced unless unanimous consent is obtained for the immediate consideration of such ordinance or resolution, such consent to be given by roll call and the vote thereupon spread upon the.
Okay, so we cannot even consider the ordinance without a unanimous suspension. So without the.
It can be introduced, it is introduced, but not the act.
But cannot be added.
This, this Chris Regu, deals with permanent ordinances, and if you consider this temporary, you could act on it to that, but it is permanent for four years, so.
Well, is, is a term of four years permanent, or is it?
Four years.
Four years, that's temporary.
Yeah, and then you've got one council number, or do you host it?
Yeah.
For what, and the other person in the council would want, how is that a matter?
If you consider this a temporary ordinance, you could go ahead and act on it without unanimous consent.
Do you need to rephrase our?
So a temporary ordinance for the term of four years?
He, he is the attorney, I'm just, I'm just reading what he said.
So can we say temporary ordinance was a term of four years?
I understand whichever way you go, but, but, but the distinction is that if it's permanent, then one negative vote will mean that you introduce it that council meeting, you act on it at the next council meeting.
And next council meeting is too late to act on it.
Okay, so that's.
Why would you hold us up from voting? I mean, sorry, why would you hold us up from voting?
Wait.
I have a vote.
I understand you have a vote, but why would you hold us up from voting on an ordinance?
Because of what the ordinance encodes.
You can't, but, uh, so I guess the question of, the question is, why won't you allow your no vote to go through?
Good one. I don't understand that.
Because, because right now you're saying no to just.
I never.
Can we make it, can we make it check with the council, knowing that? Well, the ordinance itself, by the, by the very nature of it, in my judgment, is temporary because it, it's not forever.
That's right.
It's for four years here.
You'll be called upon in four years to do another ordinance.
Or not do.
Or not, if you don't do another ordinance, you may get no pay.
I tried.
You, you are called upon to act.
Okay.
As to what the new council is to do. Four years is, uh, you could be called on to do it again, so.
Are we, so, but are we legally, are we legally allowed to do that, though?
He's saying what I'm.
I'm saying, I'm, I'm saying that I think you could consider this a temporary ordinance.
Attorney Joe, can you give us an example of a permanent or, uh, you know, the opposite of what we're saying is temporary? What's an example?
Zoning laws.
Right, those are long-term, permanent.
Long-term, permanent, uh, they stay in place until, um, they stay in place until.
Perpetuity?
Well, perpetuity unless there's an amendment to them.
Okay.
Uh, but you would be amending a permanent ordinance, zoning ordinances is a certain one that, um, stands out, that, um, this, uh, the speed on your roadways, the ordinance that you have dictating the speed, that stays the same and is permanent until you might change it, but it's not temporary, you might have a temporary ordinance saying during the Crawdade Festival, speed limit in all of the city is twenty-five miles an hour, that's temporary, and, and, and as soon as the festival's over, that ordinance is over.
So with that reasoning, then these would be a temporary, because we're only doing it for four years.
So the cost of anything wouldn't even have been, wouldn't even be a part of it then?
But then, yeah, so the problem, we couldn't do the cost of living portion of it. Because it.
Yeah, that would be permanent, that's.
That would be the permanent part.
Oh, you got a neat storage of permanent and temporary, I gotta have two separate.
Don't you take that off.
That require two separate ordinance.
Well, it, it, it would not take two, but in order to do what you're doing now with the raise for the council, that would be temporary.
Does the cost of living?
The cost of living, I don't know that you're under the two-week deadline on that.
Well, the cost of years, the cost of living is already in it, well, no, no, it's the insurance.
The customer won't be allowed to follow.
Wait, no, wait, yeah, we, we.
He don't want to, the only, he don't want it, he don't want to pass it, so he's keeping us afloat.
The. So.
Why would this brought up before now?
The.
Cause I, I just found it in.
Well, I don't know, you know.
The, um, so we, but we would still need to suspend the rules, don't, we don't need to suspend the rules if it is a temporary ordinance.
You'd be brought up in the same session.
It can, it can be brought up in the same session.
Why, why couldn't you have the cost of living as temporary too, and just have to revisit it when you did it four years from now?
Well, if, if you didn't change it, though, it would be permanent, but, uh, you could, um. I guess what I'm saying is, with the cost of living, could it come up later than two? Cause that's not, um, the, the cost of, is the cost of living every four years, or does it accelerate?
Each year, it's each year.
It's each year approved by the budgets when it's presented.
Okay.
That, um.
I mean, it doesn't even have to be, there's one approved in the budget.
Correct.
So that can be temporary, yeah, if, if you, uh, if you put it under the budget process, it's gotta be adopted.
We do the same with them, but it's already, cause it's all timed for the, every year. If we give.
To reward it, we're at the temporary.
So attorney asks, would, how would the wording be changed if it says, to be paid to the members for the term beginning, but if it's for the term, that literally just means for the term.
That's right.
So it's already temporary.
That's right.
So it's a temporary ordinance anyway, so we don't need to suspend.
Yeah, and I, I haven't seen it, so I'm, I'm not certain about the cost of living language.
It just says that it would be the same as every other authority.
Yeah.
And that's really temporary, because we don't, you don't, you don't have to give it, you don't have to give one, so I think, I think the ordinance could go
based upon the fact that it is a temporary ordinance.
Okay, um, if you.
So you argue in the office.
Yeah. Do you. Would we, I'm gonna show you the way that it was worth it, so.
Do you not have to suspend it, everybody's different?
We don't have to say that it's temporary, do we just have to put anything, or?
Yeah, yeah. They don't make up that.
It's actually four of your terms.
It's a four-term.
That is a four-year term.
That was surprising, you have to leave. Thank you.
Yeah. Which is discretion, so that's temporary, that's not, um, a given.
Okay.
You don't have to give that, to the races, and you're not obligated to do it.
Okay, so in your opinion, this is, the wording is temporary in and of itself?
Yes, and could we act on it if I vote?
Well, we never, we never, we never, so, well, there was, of the vote to suspend the rules.
Well, it didn't pass. What would that mean then, anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, so. So item number seven is consideration for a temporary ordinance for setting Mayor and Councilmember Sal Brady's.
You, you could, you could add in the minutes that the attorney, that the attorney determined that it would be temporary in nature, so. You, you don't have to call it a temporary ordinance, you could just blame it on me, you could say, I see it.
Okay.
We used to, uh, let me say this, this used to come up a lot, and it hasn't. And it hasn't in several years, but it, it used to be a real ordinance to what was permanent, what was temporary, what could be brought up at the same meeting, what had to lay over. And this one's kind of urgent in that you have a deadline.
Do you think this with other cities that you dealt with too as well? I'm sure probably.
Yeah, I, y'all, y'all mentioned Troy and, and Alexandria. Several years ago, I saw what they made of the vote and it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so item number seven is an ordinance for setting mayor and council member salaries. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I introduce an ordinance for setting the mayor and council member salaries. Don't need to spell it out, like.
As listed.
As listed in our ordinance number twenty dash twenty-five. And I should have.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this ordinance? So I will just, I guess just for posterity's sake, it is considered a temporary ordinance because it is only for the term of the next council and mayor.
That's correct.
Okay, so all in favor, or do we have any other further discussion on this ordinance? Okay, so I will call it for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed?
So vote.
Thank you. So motion passes. Item number eight is an authorization for the mayor to execute a grant agreement with Innovate Alabama. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement in the state of Alabama for the Innovate Alabama Funding Agreement Grant.
Oh, we actually, I apologize, I apologize. Because this one was presented today, we do need to suspend the rules with this one.
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the Alabama grant.
It's just a motion though, I think. Is it an ordinance? Did she propose an ordinance?
No.
It's just an authorized demand.
You can do it now.
We don't have to suspend.
Don't have to suspend the rules.
I'm just reading what the, and I, and I said it to them earlier. It, it does say, all ordinances, resolutions, or propositions submitted to the council which require the expenditure of money shall be held over until the next regular meeting. Now, the question is, I think we have it answered. We're going to get the money first, and so we will not, it's a.
We don't have to spend the money first.
Well, yeah. But then it's still a fine line. It, it's still spending the city's money even though it's coming from a grant. Does that need, you know, a, to me, I don't think it hurts to have.
No.
I have a motion to.
Thank you, Councilman Pearl. Do we have, wait, so we did have a motion on the floor, I apologize. Let's, let's, let's back up just for, okay. So we did have a motion. Do we have a second for Councilman Jackson's motion?
No.
We can't. Yeah, so let's not have, okay. So for the moment, that motion died, okay. Now, we need a motion to suspend the rules.
I made a motion to suspend.
Thank you, Councilman Pearl. Do we have a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harlow. Do we have any discussion on suspending the rules?
No.
All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are suspended, okay, we're done. Can we have a motion? Councilman Jackson.
Move that we authorize the mayor to execute a grant agreement in the state of Alabama for the Innovate Alabama Funding Agreement Grant.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this authorization? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have, the next item on the agenda is an executive session for purchase or sale of property and pending litigation. So what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion. Okay, make a motion, we move an executive session for purchase and sale of property and pending litigation Lupers Adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to move into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I will ask our attorney Adams to go in there with us and, or CFO to go in there with us. And does anybody else need to go in there with us?
If you have time, that's a good.
Okay, so all in favor of moving into executive session? Yay, any opposed? At this time, we will move into executive session. It is unknown at this time whether we will get our business. Look, I can't even have a whole night.
It was one sheet.
All right, can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Move that we come out of the executive session.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jackson, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on coming out of executive session? All in favor of coming out of executive session, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have an amendment to the agenda, so I need a motion to amend the agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
Adding item number nine.
Ten.
Ten, adding number.
Which would, which is.
An authorization.
Okay.
And then you can detail, or not detail, you can say the authorization. Okay, so Councilman Pearl has made a motion to amend the agenda to add item number ten, an authorization to an agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on amending the agenda? All in favor of amending the agenda this evening, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten is an authorization for the mayor to execute.
So we had to give, suspend.
Well, yes, it's been a while. You're asking, taking it. In order, in order to consider this authorization, we do need to suspend the rules. So what are the wishes of the council?
We suspend the rules.
Thank you. Councilman Enfinger, I have not, I have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on suspending the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item number ten is an authorization for the mayor to execute two agreements under Project Evergreen. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I have a move that we authorize the mayor to execute the agreements under Project Evergreen. Two projects.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Harlow. Oh, look at the, right in the picture right now. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this authorization? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, please note that there is a court report and a financial report in your packet. So with member of the business, mayor, do you have any final comments?
I'd like to answer that.
Councilman Enfinger? Councilman Jackson? Councilman Pearl?
Nope.
Councilman Harlow?
Hope see you Saturday downtown.
Saturday downtown, thank you. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on adjourned? All in favor of adjourned, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I call this meeting to a close.